At this time, I will call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Here.
Commissioner Granados?
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Here.
Commissioner Leon?
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Present.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded?
Here.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Present.
And Chair Williams?
Here.
Chair, you have nine commissioners present for this evening's regular meeting.
Thank you. Would you now please lead us in the prayer and the salute to the flag?
Humbly we ask God, the giver of peace and the lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. Clerk, would you please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act?
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of the New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022 along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022 in the Administration Building, and further by following the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the communications?
It's a move, Madam Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Baker, seconded by Vice Chair Hudak.
Madam Chair and Mr. Clerk, I'm going to have to abstain from the December 2nd regular-
Oh, we haven't gotten there yet.
Oh, we haven't.
Yeah, that's the next thing.
My mistake. Thank you.
That's okay.
My mistake.
So if you would, please call the roll.
Okay. Can you just confirm one more time, the motion was made by?
Commissioner Baker and seconded by Vice Chair Hudak.
Thank you kindly. All right, at this point, Commissioner Baker?
Excuse me. Yes.
And this was, you were saying you were abstaining from the December meetings?
Communications.
Oh, this is communications.
This is communications.
You're not there. Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson? Communications.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have nine votes in the affirmative for the communications, Chair.
Okay. Now, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 2nd, December 16th, and January 6th meetings?
It's a move, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, that was moved by Commissioner Mirabella and seconded by Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded. All right. Would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair, and I apologize. Commissioner Baker?
Mr. Clerk, I'm going to have to abstain from the December 2nd and December 16th minutes and approve of the January 6th minute.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes, and abstain to the January 6th.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye to all.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Abstain for January 6th and yes for all of the December meetings.
Commissioner Leon?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye to all.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aye to all.
And Chair Williams?
I will abstain from the December 2nd agenda and regular meeting sessions and aye to the others.
Chair, for the Thursday, December 2nd agenda and-
Kim.
Kim.
Oh.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded?
Aye to all.
We've got to rally for the rest of this meeting.
Really?
Good thing this meeting is quick. Chair, for the minutes of the December 2nd Agenda Setting Session, seven votes in the affirmative with two abstentions. For the Thursday, December 2nd Regular Meeting, you have seven votes in the affirmative with two abstentions. For the minutes of the Thursday, December 16th Agenda Setting Session, you have eight votes in the affirmative with one abstention. For the minutes of the Thursday, December 16th Regular Meeting, you have eight votes in the affirmative with one abstention. And for the Thursday, January 6th, 2022 Reorganizational Meeting, seven votes in the affirmative with two abstentions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this meeting is open to the public for the purpose of commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or on any other governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern. As you come up, please state your name and town of residence for our records, and if speaking on a resolution on the agenda, please note the resolution number to which you are referring and adhere to our five-minute time limit. Thank you. With that, the floor is open.
Good evening, Chair Williams, ladies and gentlemen of the Commissioner Board, Bruce Patterson Garwood. On page 2, at the very bottom, number 129, so far, I like Commissioner Baker, by the way, because he asked a question about that one, so that was good, you know, you're paying attention. Still got to get up to speed, you know, and rally as Commissioner Hudak said. But anyway, yeah, a lot of questions on this. He did ask question. The Deputy County Manager did answer, but just for further clarification, this was a co-op and it's based on unit prices. You didn't go out for a bid, because this is doubling the original contract, more than doubling. So I'm just wondering, how did this, you know, dollar amount come about and be incorporated into the 2.2 million? And when I'm talking about the 1.6 million add. Is this on an as-needed basis? That's another question, and that's it for that one. On page 3, on the very top, number 130, this is a contract going out to four connections for maintenance and lease of existing fiber optic. I believe this was also questioned by one of the commissioners. But it's $500,000. I kind of remember it five years ago, and I don't remember the number there, but it was back, big back then. And yes, the Elizabeth is sharing in the cost. But I'm just wondering, about 10 years ago, there was like a dark cable resolution, some kind of dark cable that was connecting to all the county buildings. I'm just wondering, is this dark cable part of this? Because I remember the county paying for whatever that was, so maybe some clarification on the dark cable. Number 136, at the bottom of page 3, this is the entering into an agreement for purchasing of property in Roselle Park, and I understand it's the EMS building and I guess property. And I'm just wondering, you know, what exactly are you going to be doing with this? Is there going to be additional fit-out? I'm just wondering, the county taxpayers, are we going to be spending more money for equipment or build-out or additions, et cetera? Just like some clarification on that. Number 137 is also an agreement for property, 735 Springfield Avenue in Berkeley Heights for nearly $2.6 million. I spoke about this at the bond ordinance, and I'll tell you, and I also asked for a lot of the backup, and I got the backup. And I'm looking at it, and I got major questions with this, and I'm going to ask you to shelve it for now, to relook at it. But yes, I looked at the assessments, I forgot the name of the company that did the assessments. But what, he made a major blunder in that, you know, he said, well, you know, breaking down into unit townhouse units, you know, it would cost this much per unit as a unit price. And he was wrong, because he left out, it's right next to a river, so he left out the whole wetlands impact to that property. And therefore, it couldn't do like this townhouse concept that he laid out, there's no green space, no circulation plan. The developer, whoever the developer would be that would be chasing this property, because that's the way he was assuming it, would not be paying this $2.6 million. No way. He would maybe try to fit all those townhouses in there, you know, but it wouldn't work. So I mean, the assessor made a blunder, and he didn't address this property properly, and what he came out with was a top dollar of $2.6 million that a developer would pay, which is wrong. It's just plain wrong. And it really would work out to about $1 million an acre, it's about one and a half acre, so it's about a million and a half. I'm asking you to shelf this only because you should be able to renegotiate it, it was just wrong, what the assessor did. It should be maybe a $1.5 million at the most, so you could save the taxpayers $1 million. And on top of that, actually, you know, you're spending this extra $1 million, you're also borrowing the money. So that's another slap in the face. So we got major issues with this resolution. You're chasing it, I don't know if you're running scared, I know it's a piece of the puzzle, because county property is surrounding it, and I know it's a little piece of the jigsaw puzzle. And yes, it sounds nice, it should be in there, but you shouldn't be paying top dollar based on a flawed assessment by one of your professionals. So I suggest you shelve this and relook at it, renegotiate with Santori, the lawyer, and get it down, at least half a million dollars. I'll go for half a million dollars savings for the taxpayers. And then, just in general comments, last time I talked about how we could have a zero tax impact for all the towns, and in fact, it would actually be negative taxes for many of the towns, but at least a zero tax impact. I did explain it, I don't know if anybody talked to Finance Chair Sergio Granados about it. Without going into it again, I'd be glad to send an email if Chair Williams agrees that, you know, put it down in writing, so I can send it in, so you can take a look at it, and the taxpayers would be very happy this year.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Patterson. Okay. So could I please have Deputy County Manager Wagner, please come up and respond to 129 and 130, please, for Mr. Patterson's benefit?
Absolutely, through you, Chair. The bid we did originally was what's called a catalog bid, so it gives us a discount on parts and it gives us a discount on labor. The original amount that we bid was what we anticipated we would need during the course of the co-op, while it was active. This project then became something that we wanted to do, and in fact, needed to do, so we have to add the money into the co-op to be able to use that pricing structure. The other question had to do with 10 years ago seeing a contract related to dark fiber. Mr. Patterson is correct, 10 years ago, we would have done it. We also did it five years ago, and now we're doing it again. It happens every five years. It has not increased, the price has stayed the same over the course of time, and the Elizabeth contribution has stayed the same as well.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
For Reso 136, I would ask Public Safety Director Moran to come up.
Chair, if you like, I could probably respond to that. My office is handling the transaction, so I'm familiar with it.
Okay, go ahead.
The question was very simple, is there going to be any additional funds for fit-out or adding on to the building? The answer is no. This is an existing building that is used for ambulances, that is what we are going to use it for. It will give us an opportunity to have county ambulances in another location in the county so we can respond more quickly. So there should be basically no cost beyond just the purchase of the building.
Okay. Thank you so much. If you had anything to add, Andy, you were certainly welcome to come up, but I think that it's been answered. Thank you. And for number 137, could I please ask Victoria Durbin to come up and respond to that, and that is the property in Berkeley Heights?
Yes, thank you, Chair, through you. I respect any opinion that's given, but can confirm that our assessment is credible and correct. And then further, I will note that the wetlands issue is not relevant, because there is a parcel of land that is not owned by the county or will not be owned by the county. It's a paper street owned by Berkeley Heights, so that presents a buffer and was not included in the assessment.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other members of the public who would like to come up? Okay. Right. Seeing no one else, I will formally close this portion of the meeting and ask for a motion to adopt Resolutions 119 through 145.
It's a move, Madam Chair.
That was moved by Commissioner Granados and seconded by Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have nine votes in the affirmative on all resolutions.
Thanks so much. And now, if we have Commissioner reports, if anyone wants to speak on some item of interest to them, I will start to my far left. Commissioner Garrettson?
No report today.
Thank you. Commissioner Leon?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I just would like to say that Tuesday marked the start of Black History Month, and I would like to take a minute to honor and celebrate the vital role that African-Americans have played in the development and progress of our nation throughout history. We have a whole month of events planned, and I'm sure that Chair Williams will tell everyone what's going on throughout the county. I would also like to send my warmest wishes to everyone celebrating Lunar New Year across our country and around the world. Families and friends are gathering to celebrate the possibility and hope of new beginnings. We are entering the Year of the Tiger that represents strength, courage, which I believe coincides significantly with a hopeful recovery as we continue to beat this horrible pandemic. Let us embrace this year with hope, love, health, and kindness. From my family to yours and all the commissioners, we wish you a very happy and prosperous Lunar New Year. Thank you, that is it for me tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Leon. Commissioner Granados?
Thank you, Chair. Just echoing the comments of Commissioner Leon, definitely want to thank the leadership of yourself, Chair, Commissioner Garrettson, and Commissioner Baker, in reference to kicking off the Black History Month programs with African-American flag raising in front of the courthouse. We have plenty of individuals there in support and, you know, continuing to show the diversity and the efforts of us always coming together in support of one another. And in reference to another topic, I know I joined yourself, Chair, Director Debbie Anderson, Deputy County Manager Wagner, along with other county employees and nonprofits in the Point in Time Count. And it truly was humbling, if you ever have a chance, definitely participate in Point in Time Count. It truly shows you how, you know, how much we have for us and how many individuals are out there in need. And, you know, it's a great collaboration to the County of Union and nonprofits, and not only find these individuals shelter, but also making sure we help them with supportive services, to making sure that we're trying to get out of homelessness for those individuals. I know when we went out on Tuesday night, we encountered two individuals, one individual who was sleeping inside of a truck for the past month. And, you know, when we found him, we talked to him, we tried to provide him shelter, and for us, he literally was saying, I just need an ambulance, I want to go to the hospital. He's like, you know, I suffer from post-traumatic stress disorder, and I just need help. So we called for an ambulance, and ambulance came and were able to transport to the hospital. The following day, he got in contact with the County Social Services Department and was able to get the shelter and different services that needs him to, you know, road to recovery. And we ran into another individual in Walgreens parking lot who has been homeless for the past five years. And he was living with his mom and his mom's boyfriend, and when she passed away, the boyfriend kicked him out of the house. And he's somebody who was in need, and we talked to him, and we put him in shelter at the YMCA, and the YMCA helped him out in getting services. And with that said, too, I definitely want to make note, because we will be sending, well, I'll be sending a letter, and hopefully, the support of this Commissioner Board, too, when it comes to 211. Definitely is a program that was supposed to benefit people who are homeless, but when we're calling up the number and them trying to ask individuals who are 30, 40 minutes away, that's a shelter that you can go to, and you have your own transportation, having a homeless individual travel 30, 40 minutes on their own, I see, it's beyond my belief on how they can think somebody can do that. So I definitely want to thank the county staff who worked quickly in making sure they found them local shelters to be able to go to. So with that said, I say thank you to everybody who participated in the Point in Time Count, and thank you for residents who continue to donate supplies, clothing, et cetera, to help out individuals in our communities. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Granados. Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to make mention, after a small break due to the rise in cases of COVID in Union County, we are once again kicking off our Child Car Seat Inspection Program. It reopened again yesterday. Last week, I had the pleasure of visiting the Inspection Center with Chair Williams and Commissioner Kowalski, and I had two of my own car seats installed in my car, and I have found that it's just such a great service that we have here in Union County for families of young children, because car seat safety is such a priority. The inspection program is located at the Garwood Rescue Squad at 401 Second Avenue in Garwood, and it runs on Wednesdays and Thursdays from 7:30 a.m. to 11 a.m., and there's no appointment necessary. So I encourage you, if yourself or anyone you know wants to make sure that their car seat is installed the right way, it's a great thing to do. And I also just wanted to recognize everyone wearing red today in honor of the American Heart Association's Go Red campaign, so thank you, and that's all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Palmieri-Mooded. Commissioner Kowalski?
Thank you, Chair. I'd also like to congratulate you and our colleagues on the commemoration of African-American History Month, the flag raising, and I look forward to the other events that we have throughout this month. I had the pleasure of attending an event at Union County College, which was very educational and creative and involved students and music, and a speaker who challenged people to get involved in changing our environment and challenging racism when they see it, and working together in our diverse community. So congratulations to all of the college for that. And I also want to thank the volunteers who worked on the Point in Time Count, and especially our Human Services Department. We, the county commissioners, really don't have any control about the price of housing and the housing crisis, but we do deal with the effects of it, and our Human Services Department does an excellent job of providing services. We just have to make sure that the word gets out to people who need those services. And I will say again that I congratulate the recipients of the county's Heart Grant. We voted on that at our last meeting. It's $125,000 that is, has been awarded to nine individual artists and 57 organizations, artists, historians, local nonprofits, who run performances, festivals, exhibitions, and it involves people from all over Union County. It's for, it's not a huge amount of money, but it really reaches many, many people, and this is a program that's been going on for more than 20 years and always appreciated by our residents and, of course, by the people who are able to use the grant to share their art with us. Especially in the time of COVID, our artists have been extremely willing to pivot and use technology to reach people when we can't always have events in person. So congratulations to all of them, and I look forward to attending more Heart Grant performances. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Kowalski. Commissioner Baker?
Well, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say that I hope that the residents of Union County take advantage of the county-sponsored events during Black History Month. They will be educational, I hope they'll be inspirational, and that, you know, it will give our residents a chance to pause and reflect, not only on the contributions of African-Americans to this great nation, but also to look at the state of our country and to take a look at the directions that we're going into, because there's some terrible things that are happening during this time, and our Constitution is being assaulted. And I just think, and to make a long story short, I just think that we all need to come together as a nation, as a community, and to stand up for what is right, because if you're not willing to fight for what you believe in, then it will certainly be taken away from you, and we cannot afford to have that. And I also want to recognize the Department of Human Services and the staff and some of the commissioners that were involved in that tremendous effort with the Point in Time Survey, to bring services directly to the homeless who are out on the street. Folks may not realize that the county has been doing this survey for a number of years now, and its impact on those that are homeless can't be just overlooked. This kind of outreach effort by the staff and the local community-based organizations to bring services to these people is something that is noteworthy, and I just want to commend them for the tremendous effort that these people put out, especially late at night and very early in the mornings at times. So thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Mirabella?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. To just take a piggyback off of Commissioner Baker, in the Department of Human Services and the work that they do during Code Blue, when it gets to a certain temperature and, you know, actively seeking those who need shelter, that's a program that is worth all, every penny we put towards to keep people safe and protected, particularly in really, really cold weather, which we have certainly been experiencing. So I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Baker, and you're right, I appreciate that. I had an opportunity to attend the LGBTQ Ad Hoc Committee, and I'm excited for that group. It's always one of the best meetings I get a chance to attend and participate in. There's a full slate of activities coming up in 2022, and I'm looking forward to building upon the success of that office and the work that that group is doing and the office at LGBTQ Affairs. I did have an opportunity recently, earlier this week, actually, together with the county manager, to meet, as we do on a regular basis, with our Labor Advisory Board in Union County. We had a chance to meet with that group of labor leaders around Union County chaired by John Del Sorti, and this time, we had the opportunity to meet with the Senate President, Senate President Skatari, which automatically elevated that meeting from a county Labor Advisory Board Committee meeting to a state meeting. And the individuals, the labor leaders on that call, I think, really appreciated the senator's perspective. They had an opportunity to share some of their concerns, and I thought it was a very productive meeting. I thanked the county manager for his participation and support of that group, and it is moving forward as we all drew that group up many, many years ago. Two other quick things. One of the key things I'm looking forward to celebrating in Black History Month is on February 18th at UC PAC, the play Fences will be done, and I'm excited to be there. I believe that's the night of the Chester Holmes Public Service Award, and I'm looking forward to that. So anybody interested in that can go on the UC PAC website and look at that show and other shows, because that PAC is coming back. and other shows, because that PAC is coming back and it's getting ready to build up steam as we start, you know, hopefully moving towards more in-person activities. Last but not least, Madam Chair, I just want to note someone on our sixth floor staff who recently retired, and that's Kathy Noonan, who did a terrific job supporting this board and our efforts from the sixth floor. She had an opportunity to retire, and I don't blame her, and I wish her only the best of luck moving forward. She was certainly a valuable asset to me personally, the other commissioners, the sixth floor in general, and the residents of Union County. So I wish Kathy a very happy, happy retirement. And that concludes my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mirabella. Vice Chair Hudak?
Thank you, Chair, and I want to join you, Commissioner Mirabella, and salute Kathy Noonan, just a wonderful part of our county family, and she'll be missed in her service here, but not missed, because she's still very active.
We'll see her on St. Patrick's Day, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. As we talk a little bit about some of the contributions of the county social safety network that our Human Services Department and other departments provide, I wanted to highlight some of things regarding COVID-19. Throughout the pandemic, this board has remained committed to providing the tools needed for our residents to fight back as effectively as possible. I'd like to thank everyone for providing, I would like to provide everyone with a couple of updates regarding the county's ongoing efforts. Last month, the New Jersey Department of Health opened a free COVID-19 testing clinic right here in the county in Plainfield at the Plainfield Performing Arts Center, and it operates on weekdays from 12 to 8 and on Saturdays from 9 to 3 p.m. This clinic offers both rapid nasal swab tests with results in 15 minutes and PCR saliva tests with results in 24 to 48 hours. As we all know, testing is a key to mitigating the spread of COVID-19, and this testing site is one more resource for our residents and will augment the testing already in place within Union County by helping to alleviate long lines and wait times for results. Union County also is continuing to offer food distributions for those residents affected by food insecurity as a result of the pandemic. That is, food insecurity is real, and it remains a concern among our residents as they face housing issues and unemployment. To date, the county has distributed over 12 million pounds of food to residents in need. Our next distribution will be held this Saturday, February 5th at 8 a.m. at Kane University and Union Township. This is a drive-up distribution. Residents must arrive in a car. The food distributions are open to all Union County residents, and food will be distributed on a first-come, first-served basis. No registration required. Each resident will receive one emergency box of produce, dairy, and shelf-stable food with enough to sustain a family for several days. The county commissioners thank, again, Village Supermarket and Garjulio Produce for their continued support in this effort. And I wanted just to add my support, beyond my vote, for the resolutions completing the purchase both of the ambulance hall in Roselle Park and the parcel in Berkeley Heights. Regarding Roselle Park, I just, it speaks to the expansion of our Emergency Services Dispatch under the leadership of Director Moran, and it's been such a successful program. We're glad to see that acquisition taking place and to see the success of that program. And then in regard to the property in Berkeley Heights, I don't think it's very logical to assume that as the market continues to elevate that we could negotiate a better price on it. So I don't necessarily want to entertain that comment, but to me, there were three factors, it was, four factors really. It was a nice chunk of property, it was contiguous to county-owned land, the price was in a market range, and above all else, open space is rare in the most densely populated state in the nation, and, you know, it's, I'd rather not think about how many houses the developer could really have squeezed into the property. I'm happy to know that there will be a little more open space in Union County for our residents to enjoy. So I think it's a purchase worth making and a good decision for the Open Space Trust Fund. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hudak. I just have a couple of things to add. As others have noted, the Point-in-Time Count of people experiencing homeless took place this past week. I think we finished up on Tuesday. And I went out with Director Anderson and some volunteers and Deputy County Manager Wagner to the western part of the county, and we focused on Plainfield. And as others have said, the need is great, and I too want to applaud the volunteers who assisted in this very important count of folks who are desperately in need of housing. So thank you, Director Anderson and Deputy County Manager and Commissioner Granados and all the other volunteers who assisted with that. My last point is about Black History Month. As others have said, we are presenting a number of events, virtual and in-person. I want to thank everyone who did come out in the cold weather for our flag raising, and wonderful remarks were made at that event. So thank you so much. Our next event will be this coming Wednesday, February 9th. It's a virtual lunch and learn focusing on coping strategies and wellness, particularly for people of African descent. As we all know, black people have been disproportionately affected by COVID, so there, we have a group that will be coming in and discussing specific ways of coping and also discussing the ways in which black communities in our county have been affected. So that's 12 noon to 1 p.m. on Wednesday, February 9th. On February 18th, as Commissioner Mirabella and others have mentioned, we are presenting a live production of August Wilson's Fences at the UC PAC in Rahway in partnership with the city of Rahway. And as Commissioner Mirabella noted, the Chester Holmes Humanitarian Award, an annual award, will be presented to a worthy, worthy person. Also, on Thursday, February 24th at 6:30 p.m., we invite everyone to attend a free virtual lecture by Professor Keith Wolcott of Union County College. It is titled "African-American Survival: From Jim Crow to Civil Rights and Beyond." Cultural and Heritage Affairs Office produces wonderful events, very, very informative and educational, and I'm pleased that we're able to get Professor Wolcott to come. Thank you, Union County College, as well. For more information about our Black History events, live and our virtual events, please visit ucnj.org/BlackHistoryMonth, and you will see some of the things that we are doing. There may be one or two additional things added, so just stay tuned, okay? Thank you so much. Tonight, we have a need to go into executive session, so our County Council, Bruce Bergen, would you please make your statement relative to tonight's exec session?
Thank you, Chair. Pursuant to provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public body may enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing certain enumerated subjects. This board now wishes to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing attorney-client privileged communications and discussions relative to litigation concerning the matter entitled Jimenez versus Union County Improvement Authority and the County of Union. The minutes of the executive session shall be separated from the minutes of the open public session. The minutes of the executive session, redacted as appropriate and necessary, shall be available in approximately 30 days. The clerk of the board shall retain the original minutes until such time as the confidential limitations have been removed, at which time they shall be made available. Upon the affirmative vote of a majority of the members present, the board may retire to executive session. Upon the board's return, it may or may not take formal action on the matters discussed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Granados, seconded by Vice Chair Hudak. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrettson? Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mueded?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have eight votes and the affirmative to go into executive session.
Okay. Hang in there, everybody, so we'll go in now. Thank you. Okay. May I have a motion to come back from executive session?
Second.
Okay, that was moved by Commissioner Palmieri Mueded, seconded by Vice Chair Hudak, clerk of the board. Would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrettson? Commissioner Granados? Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mueded?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Chair, you have nine votes and the affirmative to return to the regular meeting.
Okay, and I would just at this time ask County Council Bergen if he has any statement or comment to make.
Thank you, Chair. Nothing to report as a result of the executive session.
Thank you so much. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Okay. That was moved by Commissioner Palmieri Mueded, seconded by Mirabella, or was it? Yeah. Okay. Just the opposite. Moved by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Palmieri Mueded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we adjourn.